This includes Steve Adler, the principal of Main Street School, Drew Berishow, the principal of Lincoln Street School, Beth Catterett, the assistant principal of Main Street School, Deanna Donnelly, the assistant principal of Lincoln Street School, and Renee Beauregard Bennett, the director of special education for the Exeter School District. From the board this evening, Dawn Ballance is here. She is vice chair. We also have Sarah Edwards, Patrick O'Day, and Patty Soret. My name is Neil Blaken, and I'm the chair of the Exeter School Board. Now Esther, I didn't see it. Is Allison Battles with us yet?
It's a great question.
I didn't see her come in. So maybe, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know. She might not have a panelist invite. That might be my fault. So I could try and send her a link if you want to.
She's on as an attendee.
Sorry?
I see her as an attendee right now, so we need to give her a panelist link for her to speak.
Ah, she, I'm here. I'm good where I am.
Okay, okay.
Okay, very good. All right, so we'll proceed then. Maybe we'll get the PTO update later. So that makes the, so let's assume the Pledge of Allegiance, since this is a video format. And we're going to go right to the Chair's Report, which is me, or strike that. We're going to public input first. So as everyone knows, this is, will provide the public the opportunity to provide input and comments on anything they like. But the obvious focus for this evening is the return to school plan is presented by the SAU 16 Administration and our team here in Exeter. So I'll be working with Esther and Dr. Ryan to manage the flow. But I thought we should open it up now for public input. And you would do that, I believe, Esther, via the chat function.
Yes, it is open up, and I just posted the link to the Listen and Learn video from the August 11th meeting. If people want access to that, the link to the frequently asked questions from Exeter Elementary that came in before that Listen and Learn, and then the questions that we got before the Joint Board meeting that were more SAU, more global questions. So those are there for points of reference, and anyone can access those.
Great, thank you. So if you'd like to ask a question, please go ahead and add it to the chat function. And we'll, we have time, so please let us know what you'd like to talk about.
So a question just came in. What is the schedule going to look like for MSS and LSS kids? I think that's from Natalie. So that's in the Exeter Frequently Asked Questions, Natalie. But quickly, if maybe Drew or Steve, you want to kind of give a quick synopsis, that would be great.
I can jump in.
Yeah, I'll jump in after Drew.
Okay, so the, the schedule, I'm going through my notes right now. My, the schedule will be pretty consistent from day to day. We'll start, students will start at about nine o'clock, and they will work through 2:15. There'll be about an hour break along with, in the middle of the day for recess and lunch that all students throughout the SAU will enjoy. So in case kids are, you know, sharing homes or potting, if you will. Subjects areas will be consistent each day. So there'll be, you know, a block for English Language Arts, a block for math. During those blocks of time, teachers might handle how they use that time differently per classroom. There might be some whole group, a short burst of whole group. There might be some small group or one-on-one work. And then throughout the day, they'll also have Unified Arts classes like PE or music, for example, that will be, you know, handled by that specific teacher. So we're hoping to be relatively structured compared to the spring when we were doing this, and also consistent across our school, but also across the district.
Steve, did you want to add something?
Sure, this is very similar, Drew. We are going to be following similar schedules across the board. We both share the common lunchtime, 11:30 to 12:30. The first part of the day will be the morning meeting from 9:00 to 9:15, and we'll have a closing reflection time and meeting from 2:00 to 2:15. There will be some Language Arts and Mass during the day, as well as time for greater in-depth learning through things like project-based learning and specials. But we also know we're going to need to work with families as we go forward, because we'll try to provide flexibility and choice in ways that we can, as we look at the schedules, to help work, make it work for families.
Okay, the next question. Are plans for remote learning final and will not change? Can we plan for that? From Nora Garrity. So Nora, I believe on the agenda tonight is for the school board to make a decision on that, so we should know tonight. Any board member want to speak to that?
Esther, I think one way, tell me if I'm wrong, Esther, but the way I think this has evolved and continues is we're, we're possibly considering a return to school in remote format. But you will, you and the team will continue to edit, amend, and improve as necessary the plan as we go forward. That's my impression. Is that correct?
Yep, we will reassess in that 45-day timeframe.
Right, and then after 45 days, Dr. Ryan and you and the rest of the team will also look at the larger strategic question of the overall format, that is via remote or hybrid or something else. Is that right?
Yeah.
I think I saw Dr. Ryan join us, so welcome, Dr. Ryan. Thank you for joining us this evening.
Thank you very much, Neil. I'm very happy to be here. I see a question about the FAQ reference sheet that I'm just going to retrieve and post in the chat box. However.
Dr. Ryan, I already put the FAQs in the top, the links.
Oh, I see, because I can't see it, but that's okay. I'm hopeful that someone else can.
So one thing I just want to add in, I know we have on the agenda a possible vote, but we don't, we haven't really discussed yet as a board what form that vote's going to take. So I know Esther's right that there's something on the schedule about a vote, but we haven't decided what we're voting on yet. Right?
That, no, that's, that's, I intentionally put that as two steps for that very purpose, Patrick. That's right.
Right.
Is, if there is a time that we transition into person, but as a family we wish to continue with remote learning, is that an option? Or do we need to withdraw and homeschool? I think as we progress through this, we are, again, always assessing and evaluating. I don't think there's a particular, I don't anticipate it'll be a complete switch. I think it'll be gradual moves towards bringing students back to school as ensuring that things are safe for everyone. Does that sound appropriate, Dr. Ryan?
Absolutely. This will not be a wake up in the morning and we're all going back to school in one full swoop. This will be a phasing in over a period of time as conditions permit, and conditions meaning all of the factors that we need to have in place in order to guarantee that all of our students, staff, and families remain safe. So that would mean, you know, we know the health factors relative to COVID, and the conditions are pretty favorable right now. So now we're looking at how can we get our younger learners in more frequently? What are some of the additional safety factors that we need to add in? Testing is an opportunity for us to explore, certainly surveillance testing as well as contact tracing. Looking at ways to continue to clean the air. We talked about ionization last night, cooperative board level. I don't know, Esther, if you had the opportunity to discuss that tonight, but it is something we're going to want to introduce as another layer of safety. So this would be a gradual process, and we believe that by having everybody starting on the same, the same foot easing into it as opposed to trying to ram everybody in and then having to peel back based on certain circumstances changing, we think this is the most prudent way to go about it.
Ellen, I think this, you're up, or Ellen, what about our elementary special needs and learning disabled students? You're on, will you, Helen?
Good evening, everyone. I'm going to ask actually Renee Bennett if she could look at that from her building perspective first, and then if there's clarification from the overall guidance we've been given by the Department of Ed, I'd be happy to clarify.
So we're, we're working this week to schedule the IEP meetings to determine which students and to what degree they'll receive their face-to-face services. So we're just going to ask parents to engage with the IEP teams to answer those questions. And we started some of those meetings this week, and we'll just, we're just going to do as many as we can with as many staff that are willing to come in and have these meetings, and we're just going to keep going until we get to everybody.
Just a comment, thanks for your work on this. Trust is on your side, and our family appreciates all the efforts. Thanks, Nora. Question for students new to Exeter schools. How will they be orientated to the school and to their teachers at the beginning of the year? I think that's to Drew and Steve.
So on September 10th and 11th, so the first two days of school for students, we're scheduling sessions where students and families will come in to meet their teachers. Obviously, it'll be, it'll need to be mutually agreeable to do so, and in the classroom or outside or virtually. And during that time, we'll have, you know, a period of time, I should say, at Lincoln Street School, we're scheduling 20 minutes. And it will be an opportunity for students to meet their teacher, for the, you know, build that connection and the relationship between the family and the teacher and the school. And, you know, we'll have some activities that we'll send out to families prior to that day, so everyone can come with, you know, prepared and written, have a good solid conversation and just begin that relationship. So our hope is to, you know, start the relationship there, because we recognize those folks that are coming from outside of the school and haven't, haven't, you know, been in the school yet or coming from a much different place. So we want to make it as welcoming and open as possible.
It's very similar at Main Street School. We will also be using the 10th and 11th for orientation days. Our meetings will be a little longer, because it's helpful with the younger kids, they need a little more time. It'll be a chance for us to share materials as well, to distribute technology and distribute other materials for at-home learning and for the remote learning that's taking place at home. And then we'll also continue to do things like sending home newsletters and connecting virtually with families.
The next question, will we be getting schedules for my son's teacher for my child at MSS? I assume that's part of the orientation, Steve?
Yeah, and it's very possible we may have the schedules to them before that orientation, just so that they have a heads up for what it'll look like.
Will we be receiving emails from our children's teachers soon as to what we need at home to assist with teaching?
Yep, so that's part of the communication that we'll have regarding the orientation. We're working on that actually right now, and we're trying to reach out to our teachers to get the best, you know, list and the most reasonable list as possible. And, yeah, that will be short shortly.
Esther, can I interrupt for just a quick sec?
Sure.
Do you mind making me a co-host? We have a couple of extra Steve Adler's on the screen, and I think there's only one real Steve Adler. It's the one we see. So if you can make me the co-host, I can regulate. Looks like his password might be compromised, so someone's gathered his unique invitation.
I would love to do that, but where do I do that?
So hover, hover over my photo in the upper right-hand corner, you'll see the three dots.
Yep.
Click that, and it says make me co-host.
I have make host, but I don't have make co-host.
Um, go ahead, make me the host, and I'll make you back after I'm done.
Okay, you're now the host.
Perfect, I will take care of these folks.
Sorry for the interruption. Okay, continuing on from Jennifer Goddess, I'm going to paraphrase, this is a long one. She had a kindergarten her last spring. Her had some difficulties staying engaged with remote. She gets a lot of support, which is great, from her teacher, guidance counselor, and case manager. She would like to know what assistance will there be for all parents with children who do not want to learn remotely, start checking out, or are having a hard time with remote learning? Is it possible to provide some training to help us keep our children engaged before September 10th, when school starts?
So. I can answer, I can answer that, because we started some of that work near the end of the remote learning, and we carried it over through the summer for our parents that communicated this area of need to us. So the short answer is yes. The longer answer is we don't know, unless you share with us what your needs are, so that we can support you and your student. So again, this is really about the importance of parents engaging with the IEP team and being honest with us, sort of what your needs are and how we can support you. So the short answer is yes, and just make sure you're really engaging with the school and the case manager what you need, and we can find a way to continue to support you.
Just to add to that, one of the things we're certainly going to do is we know that, we looked at some of the things that were effective in the spring. We know that the more we can provide time for personal connection, that really helps. You know that providing choice really helps. Recognizing and responding to work really helps. So we'll, we will draw upon the things that worked well with our students in the spring, but we'll also be there, ready to consult with parents if they're having difficulty and try to brainstorm within ways to help their child stay engaged.
We are, I was just meeting with a group of Restorative Justice Leadership Team yesterday, and looking at putting together sort of a regular, a regular meeting that would be based on some sort of a theme and have it just be open to, you know, drop in for parents to just ask questions, to learn about different services and things we can do at school to help families connect. So that's something that we're developing and putting together to try and answer questions just like this, and just to provide as much, you know, guidance and help and support as possible.
I know they, I think I was supposed to say held, it says help, but I know they held the meeting last night addressing the back-to-school for middle and high schools. Is Main Street School still going to be virtual? Or is there a different plan for action at Main Street? Curious why they broke out into separate meetings. Mike, that's separate meetings, they all have separate boards, school boards. So Exeter Elementary has this board that you see, and last night, that's the Exeter Region Cooperative School District Board that oversees the middle school and high school. So that's why there's different meetings for different boards to have that discussion and deliberation about the plan for return to school. Please, I got a lot about the frequently asked questions, so I reposted it again. So I'm thinking you can see that now, it's a little bit further down, but that should be down, just a couple of questions where it was. So maybe I posted it too early and it didn't come through, so I've reposted that again. Next question, my second grader has an IEP. When will children with IEPs know if they qualify for any in-person sessions for any of their services? Renee, I think that's to you.
Yeah, again, we're working hard to get those meetings scheduled. I just, our teachers and a lot of our case managers are not working right now. So it's getting scheduled around their family vacations and whatnot, so that we can have full IEP meeting. So we, the answer is as soon as possible, and we're working really hard to schedule those, schedule those meetings with the appropriate staff.
Next question from Jamie Surrice. How will the lessons and activities be shared with students?
I can jump in on this one, and so a combination of both Seesaw and Google Classroom will be used. We're working through exactly what that will look like, but Seesaw is, that's what we're using for our portfolio, basically, for students to demonstrate their competency and their learning and the progress over time. And there have been some developments on Seesaw over time, where I think it'll look a little bit different, we'll be able to use it. Teachers will be able to use it a little bit differently as sort of like a landing page, an announcement page for families. We're kind of hoping that that will be, you know, like the one-stop shop to start with. And then from there, we can branch out to Google Classroom, where it will be a place to sort of manage some assignments or things. But that answer will also sort of depend on the grade level, different, different classrooms, different grades tend to lean on those two tools a little bit differently. But Seesaw will be the sort of go-to place to start with, for sure.
Drew, can I ask a quick question? Is it correct to say that your use of Google Classroom is an attempt to resolve some of the challenges you faced with Seesaw in the spring? Is that right?
Yeah, that's the hope. So Google Classroom helps to, I guess, maybe organize assignments in a way. Seesaw is, you know, if it's one place where folks have to log into, they can go there and they can, you know, click the link that will bring them to Google Classroom, where then the sort of assignments might be unmanaged. But then Seesaw will be the place where kids post or, you know, attach their assignments or their, you know, the finished product or however the teacher manages it. But yeah, the attempt is to sort of, that'll help clean it up a little bit, so folks aren't seeing like a laundry list of assignments in Seesaw.
Thank you.
Let's see, all right, next question. For the youngest students, how simple is it going to be for them to stay connected with their teacher throughout the day? Are they going to need someone helping them?
So we're certainly going to do everything we can to help the kids to become independent. The younger kids will have iPads, which will be easier for them to utilize than Chromebooks. We'll also be providing hands-on activities that they can actively do. Certainly having someone there to support them is enormously beneficial.
How will students have the teacher they were notified about in the spring? Ryan O'Brien, if that helps for which school?
I couldn't, I can share at Lincoln Street School, that, that is the plan. There are a few sort of outstanding situations that we're, we're working through. And quite honestly, after tonight, we know hopefully sort of have a solid direction. We have solid footing underneath us, we'll be able to move forward with more confidence in terms of some of those outstanding questions that I was referring to. But for the large part, for the majority, yeah, the classroom placement in the spring will be the same in the fall.
Similar for Main Street, you know, for a variety of different reasons. I've got occasional requests, like parents having a common tutor or neighborhoods or kids working together, where I'm looking at those placements upon request. But if there wasn't a request, we're going to be doing our best to keep them with their current placement.
I should also add that we have a pretty good number of new enrollments at Lincoln Street School. And so that will, you know, that always adds a little bit, an additional equation or variable to the equation, I should say.
One more question, any insights on Friday's schedule? Will it be slash, could it be a catch-up day for the elementary kids as in the spring?
As of right now, our schedule goes Monday through Friday. So we won't have that same catch-up day on Fridays.
Will there be any outside meeting greets, so the teacher can introduce and talk to children about remote learning? Also, maybe make a person, an in-person connection with our children? I think that's the orientation that you both have spoke of.
Yes. Yes.
If a child cannot be available from nine to two daily due to parents working outside the home. How will the individual teacher handle this? Being specific to my child, he will go to work with me some days and won't be able to be available those hours.
I would have that family contact the teacher and me and we will work to try to help them access. So we, we will provide a, the structured program, but we know that. There will be some families that may have difficult accessing and we're going to look for ways. To provide support so that they can access the pieces as, as needed.
Same at Lincoln Street School.
My son goes to outpatient OT and play therapy. This has been during the school day in the past. Will this still be allowable during the remote learning? Thank you for everything you are doing for the kids and teachers' safety. I see Renee shaking her head. Yes.
Yes. Yep. That's exactly something that we want to work with parents about, um, scheduling that.
Will teachers be building their own curriculum or will the curriculums be standard across grades?
They'll be standard across grades. So each, each grade level competencies that they're, that they're shooting for. Uh, uh, if, if you're referring to instruction across, um, the grade levels, um, that's where it will be a little bit more flexible than. Then say learning targets or learning goals or the competencies. So. Um, there is always going to be a little bit of variability from classroom to classroom in terms of how teachers teach or how teachers, you know, reach their kids. Um, and that's just due to the number of variables and, you know, between just people and, and styles and personalities and, and. That kind of thing, but we certainly, one of the. The largest, um. Themes that we heard over the course of the, the spring from parents was the, the need and desire for consistency. Um, from classroom to classroom. So that is definitely a goal is to, to make things as. As similar as possible from, from one class to the next.
This week, some of the after-school partner agencies have put out plans for at-cost care to facilitate remote learning. Why is it that private partners are able to provide in-person facilitation and the schools cannot provide any kind of in-person services for the youngest students? There is no way that children five, six, seven years old can learn on a remote, on a computer or iPad while their parents work. What this means is that in-person help for younger kids is going to only be available for those who can afford to buy it. I believe that our community should be able to do better for our younger learners. So the question is, why is it that private partners are able to provide in-person facilitation? And the schools cannot provide any kind of in-person services for the youngest students? I don't. I don't know if you're going to take that, Dr. Ryan. You'd like me to.
So, um, what we're trying, you know, as we've stated earlier, we're working on trying to build. A feasible phase in for our youngest learners. Uh, we understand that there are some sacrifices that. Everybody needs to make in the interest of safety and the interest of making sure that we are organized. In a way that everybody's, uh, health and safety is first and foremost, and then. Focusing more on learning than on, um. On, on being physically inside of the school. Now that doesn't help parents who work during the school day or guardians who aren't going to be available during the school day. So. Uh, while we continue to work on community care centers, working with our local partners. Who are, uh, for-profit childcare centers. Trying to find a, a mechanism for all of our families to use as we, you know, work through this together. Is something that, uh, we're, we're, we're committed to doing. Um, we're open to suggestions and ideas that will help alleviate some of this pressure for our families. Um, we also, uh, want to make sure that, uh, our students are. In areas where, near where they live, uh, so wherever their school catchment areas are. So. That's still work that's going on, but. We're going to commit ourselves to trying to do the very best we can. This is new. Territory for us. We've never really been in the, uh, childcare business. Um, and so. Working with, uh, several in the community, I know that Esther Azbell, as well as Chris Andruski. Are trying to facilitate this a little bit more quickly than, than we had hoped.
Uh, I feel like I can't say this enough. Thank you, Dr. Ryan and your staff and to the board for putting our children. And staff safety is number one. Huge fan. You're doing great. Thanks. Question for Drew. Can we pick up materials such as journey books and EDM books to have on hand for remote learning? Thank you and keep up the great work.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, so during the orientation, we'll have all of those items, uh, ready. Including a Chromebook. I just heard recently that, um, I think the Cromes will be ready for orientation. So. Where that's really good news. Um, they haven't come yet, so I'm crossing my fingers, hoping that, um, information is accurate. Uh, but yeah, we'll have, um, as much of that, those materials as possible during the orientation. So folks can start off on the right foot.
Um, still getting that the frequently asked questions posted in the chat. I know Dr. Ryan posted. I posted again to all panelists and attendees, at least that's what it says to me. So.
I just visited him too, Esther, and I see people are on him. So it could very well just be. The equipment. I know that last night in our cooperative board meeting, some of our board members, for some reason, the links. Would not open for them, but for many others it would. Uh, so it could just be a glitch. I was having a glitch earlier. I needed to restart. Uh, my laptop. So, um, we apologize for that technical issue.
Uh, I keep hearing in quotes, we're going to. When will parents begin to start seeing concrete plans, learning materials, schedules, et cetera?
Uh, quite honestly, uh, as soon as everything's finalized, our. But you know, this is where, this is a work in progress and, uh, also, uh, one of the hugest things for me at least is, you know, I haven't seen my whole staff yet. Um, so we're doing this. And laying out these plans and, and speaking with representatives, of course, but, um. You know, it, it, it's a team, a team process and, you know, it takes a village to, to put everything together. And so. I want to make sure that we're all working in, in concert together and, um, in the same direction for your kids. So. Uh, as soon as, um. You know, I feel like our ducks in a row will be able to, to move forward and communicate. And I would imagine within the, the coming days, especially after this meeting, you'll start to hear, uh, much more from us.
The younger kids cannot navigate seesaw on their own without constant help. I hope that has been clear from last spring. I think that's just a comment. We will be able to print, will we? Will we be able to print activities to do at home in lieu of seesaw to memorize screen time? Then can we scan an email to the teacher?
So the answer is again, we're going to really work to provide a variety of choices. I mean, it's more important to us that. That we look at the competencies that we want students to engage in and, and the skills that we want them to learn. Uh, but we'll certainly look at working with families to be able to access learning in a variety of ways and, and, uh, give some choices.
Can you please provide examples of? Quote-unquote flexibility you spoke of. We have two working parents and a kindergartner and. I expect little learning will be taking place without our complete focus. So again, I think both buildings are. If you have a specific situation or concern, I would contact the building administration, the APs, the Beth, Renee, Steve, Drew. Um, Indiana, and they will work with you to. Help you get through that and make some plans. Yes, guys?
Very much so.
Uh, we talked about textbooks and, and materials. They will be supplied. Chromebooks you can print. We talked about that. Tonight's meeting with multiple Mr. Adler's highlights the security issues that threaten remote learning. What sort of IT security are you planning? Monitoring for suspicious activity, et cetera. So that's really a Richard Pratt question who isn't here. He's our IT manager. I don't know, Dr. Ryan, if you know, uh, better than I do, but I know at this point, you know, all the Chromebooks have the filters on them. Uh, the student Chromebooks have the school filter, so they can't access any of those sites that are. Um, not educationally sound, quote-unquote. That's part of why we have the host and these kinds of things set up this way. So if we do see something suspicious, we can quickly, as you saw. Kick people off and remove them from meetings, et cetera, et cetera. We are, um, purchasing the Zoom, which means the. That if you purchase it and don't use the free edition, which many people were using last spring. The purchase edition has signed off on the data privacy agreement with the state of New Hampshire. Um, so we, we will. We have, they've gone through Zoom, has gone through those hoops with the state of New Hampshire to. Ensure the data privacy for our students and people using them. I don't know if anyone has anything to add on top of that. Physical materials will be available to students. Will it be an option to get student assignments and walk our kids through them on our own versus Zoom calls? Video calls were not a good option for our kids last year. It would work better to have our kids focus on their work during times that. Work for our family than we could attend Zoom or do teacher check-ins only as needed. Is that an option?
Uh, you know, I don't, I don't want to rule anything out. Um. I also don't want to speak for a, uh, teacher and how she's or he is going to best reach, um, the children and, and the plans that. He or she might have, but, um, I mean, I, I think anything is, is an option and, and bottom line, we want to do the best we can for, for your kids. So. We will certainly work with you.
Uh, next question is about, do we have to use the Chromebook if we prefer they use, um, their own home desktop? You do not have to use the Chromebook if you prefer. Using something else that you already have in your home and that's working. I have a kindergartner in first grade at MSS and I'm wondering if they're only required to log in at certain times for meetings. Um, that's the same question. So again, I think, um, that's connecting with the school to see if. Some different arrangements or some flexibility. Can work for your family. Um, what accommodations, if any, are being made for families that do not have internet bandwidth sufficient to allow multiple people to use video throughout the day? Those is a particular concern to those of us with multiple students who are expected to participate remotely and are parents working remotely from home. If you have access issues, then I would ask you to contact, uh, Richard Pratt and Mark Knight. If you want to email me directly, I can. Answer that and give you a contact person to work through that with you. Again, I'm Esther Azbell. My email is easwell@sa16.org and it's on the SAU 16 webpage and I can. Connect you to the right person, Mark, to help you out. Is the curriculum adjusted for an expected slower rate of learning during remote learning?
I can, um, jump in and say we, we identify, um. You know, specific, uh, competencies and, and that, you know, we'd like to have the largest focus of, uh, various grade levels. That's not to say that, um. You know, we're putting all of our ducks in that basket because each child is different. Um, however, um. You know, that we have, you know, kids need to, um. Be competent at, at certain things at the end of each grade level and, um, it's a matter of being creative and, and focusing on the most important ones, but also, uh, you know, enriching the kids. And expanding where we can.
Will all the student work be on the computer or will handouts be provided? It was very difficult downloading and then printing handouts for my student and then uploading it back to seesaw. Thank you. I think I heard there's like a combination of both handouts and. Online.
Well, we'll, we will have share materials, uh, hard materials with parents at the orientation. We're also planning to have a check-in meeting in October and if needed, a check-in meeting in November and we can share more materials. Uh, we won't be able to pass out, um, all of the handouts that might be accessible online, but certainly. Some of the more critical and materials that'll be needed for ongoing learning that are, that are, um. In hand or be we, ones that we provide.
Um, let's see. Any further info on support locations within the community for parents who both work? If not, can you share what you're considering? Jim, we're continuing to work. That's Chris and I, Chris Andruski and I. On trying to work with our local partners to expand their, um, full day options for parents that are working. And to continue to try to bring in small groups into our schools with, um, in-school support for students that are, um. Either a tier two or a tier three, which is students that either socially, emotionally, academically, um, may struggle or may need some extra support. So we do have another meeting with our local providers on Thursday and we should know more after that. So. As soon as we have something that's more concrete for you all, we will absolutely share it. Just. Kind of gathering all the information and, uh. Continuing to see how everyone's progressing on staffing things, et cetera. So we're working on it for sure. Thank you for asking that question, Jim. Um, are teachers obligated to engage the students online a specific amount of time per day? In the spring, direct engagement was very low. Yes, we are working to have, um, teachers engage, um, every morning, every afternoon and for a period of time during each learning block. It doesn't mean that the time would be 20 minutes in one block. For, um, say ELA, they might do five minutes at the beginning, a check-in 10 in. The middle and then check out of the class, but there should be around 20 minutes for each class of teachers engaging with students. Brian Simpson, this is infuriating. Just a comment. Uh, are MSS students all getting Chromebooks? Yes, the board at the end of the year did approve purchases for Lincoln Street and Main Street to go. One-to-one and our younger kids are getting, um, iPads, correct?
Yes. Yeah, I just want to make sure about the iPad part. Thank you.
Um. I'm assuming provided during orientation. We're hoping if you, I think you're talking about the Chromebooks or iPads, Matt, and. As Drew mentioned, those are en route. We had a, we keep getting a little bit of date shift. The latest date was around September 10th and then that got bumped up. So we're hoping that still holds and we have that for those orientation days. Can neighborhood establish cohorts and hire teachers or? And I don't, it kind of stops there from Paul. So I'm not sure what the or is. Can neighborhoods establish cohorts? Certainly neighborhoods can, can work together. Um. I, in hiring teachers, all of our teachers will be working during the day in the remote. So if you were thinking of doing a cohort and perhaps a homeschooling. Uh, I'm sure there, there might be options for you to do that. Anything to add to that, anyone? Um, what happens when we have glitches in quotes at home? Your FAQ is not working for some reason in quotes. This will happen during the school year. How is students going to make up time when this happens? I don't know if either of you recognize Leroy Jenkins. In your school, but maybe you can help answer that, what you might do if there was a glitch.
Yeah, I think we've all experienced the glitch, uh, here and there and, um. You know, just like they do, uh, in the classroom, our teachers are masters at, at working around it and trying to figure out how to. You know, problem solve. So I, I have every bit of confidence that there's flexibility and know-how there to try and, uh, work it out.
Thank you. Just a couple of comments. FYI, families can print PDFs from seesaw. With all due respect, the ones who want to reduce screen time should choose homeschool. Not really, uh, questions to answer. So I'm going to continue. Thank you for all you're doing as a child of an educator and I'm working in higher education. I truly understand the difficulty. A question, will there be flexibility during the day if we have an option for alternative PE? And OT slash social communication groups during the day? Student is on 504 for these things. Also, a full-time working family with an elderly parent that lives with us. I do hope that hybrid option is the last option. Given concerns about the ability to contact trace when a class of students go in so many different directions. I'd a hundred percent prefer a remote. Or fully in-person if safe over hybrid. Thank you so much again for your efforts. So I think we've heard that there's flexibility if they're doing things during the day, right, Renee? Like OT, PT, those kinds of things. Uh, another question about community partners. Again, this is about busing and what about? Let's see, are just here to enter three and community partner daycare situations, the only one getting bussed into school for assistance? What about tier two and tier three that are at home? Karen, we haven't, um. Gotten any, anywhere near kind of figuring out the transportation. Uh, we're still trying to gather those numbers from the schools, so. I don't have an answer for that. Will lunch be in tandem with the rest of the SAU the same time? Yes. Enormous thank you to all the teachers. I do envy you. From the sounds of it, much of figuring it. Figuring out how this is all going to work will fall on you. I realize second graders will receive Chromebooks. Could they use iPads instead? That's from Joy Tobin. If you're meaning that you have an iPad at your house that you would prefer them to use, absolutely. Um, I would work with Steve Adler to see if there's some reason your particular student and iPad might work better if they're. Again, trying to be flexible and meet people's needs the very best we can. Local TV is showing last night's school board meeting. Is this meeting going to be on TV? No, we were recording it and we will post the recording. So anyone. No, we were recording it and we will post the recording, so anyone can watch it um, at any time. How will interventionists and paraprofessionals be used virtually to assist students? I don't know, Renee, if you want to speak to that a little bit?
Um, they will be utilized for remote learning support as they did at the end of the um, school year. They'll be utilized for face-to-face and all the above. So I think depending on what that student's needs are, the school's going to work and find a way to support the student the best that we can for their learning needs. So that is a possibility.
Another question about paraprofessionals. Um, you just indicated all the teachers will be working during the day. What about paraprofessionals? When will we have a clear understanding of what our roles will be eager to be back at work supporting children? Robin Allard.
Well, we are eager to have Robin back. Um, so we sent a survey out to the paraprofessionals to find out um, what their availability, availability is and then we're organizing it as we work with IP parents. Um, with parents and IP teams determine each student's needs and then we'll do the assignment. So it's a little bit different than we've done in the past. Um, but we are eager to have all of them back and working because we have um, a lot of students to serve.
Um, thank you for everything you're doing to, to take care of our children and their learning during this challenging time in our world. You're all very much appreciated. Thanks, Jody. Will LSS and MSS offer sessions to educate parents on how to use Seesaw and Google Classroom? I think that might be part of the orientation. Yes?
Absolutely. Um, and if, you know, when we mentioned how we would have um, you know, Q and A forums with teachers if we, or excuse me, with staff with parents. Um, if we realize that there's a necessity for that and have more of that, we'll certainly be flexible and open to providing whatever the needs are.
We'll also take a look at creating um, webinars that uh, can be used for some of the more frequently common needs so that a parent could access it when they wanted.
Esther, I do know that our techno wizards are super friends. Alan Sargent and Sandy Blanc are looking to do uh, virtual tutorials as well that are pre-recorded and loaded on all of our websites. So those are forthcoming as well.
Will staff get notified of a start date?
Yes.
Yes.
I, that's already happened.
You mentioned flexibility. Does this mean the kids can get assignments by the end of the day? Houses where both parents work, we might not be able to fit the nine-to-two schedule. Then there's a comma, but I don't see anything else there, Jessica.
We are looking at making sure we post uh, work in a way that allowed uh, parents to access it in a, uh, at times when they are available.
Last year, last year, there were not enough passwords for pairs to access Seesaw to help and participate with students. Has this been addressed? I think that's the number of Seesaw licenses and we are purchasing the number for people to be able to access those. That is the last question.
Thank you, Esther. Um, alright, so that's the last question. I'm going to close. Is that one right there?
Yep, one just came in and Renee, this is for you. What if you have a child who's not currently identified but may need services? I have an incoming kindergartner who is not on an IEP but received early intervention and may still qualify for speech services.
Um, email me at r Bennett@sa16.org and we will set up a disposition of a parole meeting. And we will work together and, and we'll figure it out. So don't be shy. Just reach out.
Alright, so let's go ahead and close the public input section. Thank you all. Uh, very informative and very helpful as always. So the next agenda item is the chair's report under which we now have the return to school discussion. So to open up to my colleagues on the board uh, for discussion, for the public to know, uh, the board had an internal discussion about whether or not we actually wanted to vote uh, and whether there were pros and cons. So I asked my colleagues in the board, uh, and I gotta, I, I think the easiest thing is just do it alphabetically, but whatever you like to do is fine with me. Uh, what your take is on uh, that we actually should vote and if you think we should, um, any other thoughts related to that? So I asked Dawn, who's also the, uh, Don Bones is also the vice chair to share her comments, please. And we can discuss it, I mean, afterwards.
Thank you, Neil, and thank you everyone for um, all the information. Very, very helpful. Um, I think that as we've sort of discussed in, in a number of meetings that we've had, uh, you know, throughout the summer and, and the last number of weeks, um, whether it be an extra board meeting or a joint board meeting or listening on a cooperative board meeting. You know, what, what is abundantly clear is that um, you know, the administration and the administrators um, and their staff and are the ones who have put this plan together. Um, we, through all of the dialogue and conversations that we've had, are really um, really supporting this plan and, and it's not an Exeter School Board plan, if you will. You know, it is the school's plan. So I still really think that um, it's not something that we should be voting on. Maybe more sending a message of support, which we have done in the past, which we have done. We had done it at a joint board meeting weeks ago. Um, and as we've continued to do, um, we've asked lots of questions. Um, we've, we've taken feedback from the community um, as well as the administration has. So I think um, for me, I still feel that a vote is maybe not usual in this circumstance. That's my thoughts.
Okay, Sarah Edwards.
Hi, good evening, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Thanks, Dawn. I, you know, I agree with you with the amount of work that the administration and teachers and parents have put into thinking about this plan and the variety of plans. Um, to me, I think this question is about the role of the school board and that our role is to understand the big picture and to listen carefully to the research that's been presented. And then to, you know, essentially give our opinion typically in the form of a vote about whether we support or don't support, you know, the actions of a school. And so I think, given all the work that's been done um, and because we've had a request to, to vote on it, that my feeling is that I'm okay to vote on it. I think a tremendous amount of work has been done and uh, I think it's the role of the school board, even though it's not our proposal of, of confidence or no confidence would be really critical to tell our community.
Great. Thank, thanks, sir. Patrick Gooday.
So you know, my thoughts on this are that I guess I, I tend more to the side of that this just isn't a plan that the school board created and I don't think we should be involved with second guessing the administration. I think we should listen. We should give feedback. We should support the things that we think make sense. Um, but there were 80 people that were involved in four separate committees creating these options and these plans and none of the five of us were a part of that. Uh, and I think I, I don't have a problem with that process. I think that process is very well reasoned. Um, we haven't seen any of the reports of any of those four subcommittees. We don't have access to the doctor who was consulting uh, the, the planning process to really decide, you know, it should be remote versus it should be in-person. Um, I think the general principles that were communicated to us were terrific. That in-person is the best process, that it should be adaptive, that we need to make sure that it's safe. But making a call that remote is the right way to go right now versus in-person. I don't feel like I'm in a position to decide that. I think that's up to the administration to decide. And the thing that I've been impressed about is I see that they're listening. I see that they're adapting and modifying their plans uh, based on feedback. I see that their plans are fact-based. But if they came back seven days from now and said, you know what? We've, the situation has changed. We've heard some more things. We've gotten some additional feedback and we think it should be in-person. I would trust them to make that decision. I'm, I, I can support the planning process. Uh, because I think the planning process has been very deliberative. It's been very community-based. And I've been impressed with the way that our SAU and our local district has gone about it. I think it's been very thoughtful and it continues to develop. Um, I have a hard time voting for a particular plan. No more so than I would want to vote during the year to say, uh, Steven Drew, why are you having 45-minute classes or 60-minute classes? Why are you having lunch at that time? I think this is why we hire principals that know what they're doing and they should be making those sort of decisions. Um, we certainly have been involved in the process and I, I would uh, certainly have no problem with voting for my support for the planning process, but I wouldn't feel comfortable voting for a particular plan.
Thanks, Patrick. Patty Saret.
But we did already vote in support of this plan at the joint school board meeting. So I'm feeling like why wouldn't we I guess, vote to support the plan, however we want to word it? Um, we're not kicking a plan. We're just voting to support the work and the decision that the SAU has given us. So I guess I don't see a problem with voting on this. I, so that's it.
Great, thank you. I support voting for it. Alright, so I'm going to make a motion that we should, here's my motion, that we should vote on the return to school plan this evening. Is there a second, please?
Hi, second.
Thanks, Sarah. Roll call vote. Don Bolins?
No, there's, there's discussion before once you have a motion. There's a discussion. Yeah.
Josh, you go ahead. Anyone?
Um, I think I, I agree with all the comments that have been made and I certainly um, personally support everything, the, the way that, the way that the decisions have been made, the amount of thought and energy into all of this, I completely support. Um, I just think that as this plan continues to change and evolve, which it can and it will and it should, um, I still am not, I'm still a little unclear. We normally vote on a specific action, if you will. So I'm more in favor of supporting a vote of support for the administration during this process as to say, support the remote, the return to school remote plan.
Okay, anyone else?
I have a question. Um, Dr. Ryan, could you restate uh, specifically what we voted on as a jo- joint board in public session? Because I think part of what the Exeter Board is contemplating is uh, if we're voting to support the SAU decision and the administration or if we're voting to go remote, which might be the same thing, but it might not, so.
Welcome to the complexity of a multi-district SAU. My, my boss is the SAU Joint Board, so I report directly to, to that body and the only employee of that body. So when I make decisions that have far-ranging um, implications on the operations of the SAU relative to potential changes in finance and policy as well as anything that drastically changes the course of the SAU, I need to report that to the SAU, be clear and transparent. Not only in what it is that we're proposing that we do, but also the why. Our SAU Joint Board that night, uh, when we uh, emerged from a non-public discussion regarding personnel voted to support my recommendation to move forward with a remote instructional platform. And in doing so, the SAU Joint Board confirmed me as their only employee to continue on this course of action to then bring it to each local board and determine whether or not the local board wanted to adopt the uh, remote instruction plan. It also had a discussion and in, in fact affirmed the belief that as an SAU, we've historically worked across all seven school districts in concert with one another to maintain consistency and equity for all of our students. So it was implied in that vote that all of our boards would follow suit now. I remember very clearly publicly stating it will always be at the end of the day, the local board's decision on what it wishes to implement within its own school district. The local board has the power to compel the superintendent to make changes to a plan, to vote not to implement the plan. Um, I would hope a board would not compel a superintendent to implement a plan that it does not, that it's, that the superintendent's not prepared to implement. Um, but that's essentially what the vote was at the SAU Joint Board. Dr. Ryan, do you know what the, what the wording or um, the process was last night at the co-op board? Because I, I believe they voted to approve the plan. And do you, do you know how they actually walked through that as well?
The motion that was made last evening, and we could always refer back to the video, but uh, the, the motion last night, there were two motions. Uh, there was an earlier motion by Melissa Litchfield, representative from the Brentwood School District to um, have the superintendent implement a hybrid plan. One that which, one we, which we were not prepared uh, to do. Um, and so that was defeated. There was then a motion to support the recommendation of a remote instruction plan for the Cooperative School District. That was seconded and then that was approved. That was approved eight to one, Neil.
Thank you, sir.
Sure. Can you restate the current, can you restate the current motion?
Uh, that we will this evening vote on the district's return to, it, return to school plan.
So we're voting whether to vote on the return to school plan? Is that what we're voting on?
Well, that's, I want, because there's been a lot of discussion and I think it should be on the record that we are going, it's, that we have agreed to actually make the vote or take the vote and then take the vote. That's right.
Okay, well, I, I, I would prefer to see something along these lines in terms of what we vote on and I'm not sure what we're talking about voting on, so I'll put it out there now. Um, something on the lines of that the Exeter School Board supports the SAU and district administration and planning for the return to school. I would feel very comfortable in voting for that.
So that's, that's not my motion. There's a second. There's a motion on the floor. I hear you.
I understand. I'm making, uh, we're in a discussion period. I'm discussing. So I'm trying to understand in terms of so I, I, I don't have a problem with voting. It's just, it's just, it depends on, on what the, what, what the, the vote is. So I mean, I guess that's the second part. I just want to be clear, clear about that, so.
That's fine.
I agree with you, Patrick. I like that.
Wait, wait, wait. Wait a second. There's, there's motion on the floor and it was seconded to vote on the return to school plan, right? To approve or not, right? That, that's what we're discussing. Not, not.
One of the questions, but I think, Neil, people were unsure what the vote was about and that's what we're trying to discuss right now.
Okay.
Sorry, that's what the, that, that was the, my question to Dr. Ryan about the, the joint board and just the specifics of, of, of what we might be voting on. So if we're going to vote, if we're going to vote, I'd like to know the wording of that. So I think I'm okay now.
Alright.
Thank you.
Any more discussion? Alright, roll call vote. Don Bolins?
Yes.
Sarah Edwards?
Yes.
Patrick Gooday?
Yes.
Patty Saret?
Yes.
Neil Blakenz, yes. Alright, here's my motion. I have a motion. The Exeter School Board approves the return to school plan for the Exeter School District as presented to the Exeter School Board by Superintendent David Ryan and the Senior Leadership Team of SAU 16 and the Senior Leadership Team of the Exeter School District on August 11th, 2020 and as discussed on August 18th, 2020. Is there a second?
I'd like to make a motion if there's not a second.
Wait, I want, no, is, there no second? Is that correct? Alright, Patrick, you're up.
I'd make a motion that, uh, for the following. The Exeter School Board supports the SAU and district administration in planning the return to school. Excuse me, planning for the return to school. Excuse me, planning for the return to school.
Is there a second?
Second.
Alright, discussion. Anyone? Uh, I, I'll make a comment. Um, there's a wild difference between planning something and approving something. And, um, this is not, in my opinion, the support and, um, that they've asked for. It is also not exercising our role as, uh, a, a school board. I think we're shirking our responsibilities with this. I really do. Um, I, I, I don't really understand, uh, why we're, why this approach is being considered since we already approved the plan in a couple of formats. So I, I, I think this is a mistake.
Patrick, do you mind restating the, the beginning of what you said? Cause I think the, the words between what Neil had proposed in your motion just differ slightly and.
Sure, I can read it again. The, uh, I did, I didn't use the word the. I'll start for the Exeter School Board supports the SAU and district administration in planning for the return to school.
I think that the, uh, the intent is the same, I feel, but Neil, speaking to your point of approving, it's a piece of language. I think this, this one, um, speaks to the ability of our administrative team to shift dynamically should a return to school or hybrid, like, in-person be possible. Um, a- and I, I like that aspect of it. I, I think as the role of the board to, to show approval of the work that the administration has done is our role. And I, I feel that this motion speaks, speaks to that intent.
But you, you, you realize you're only supporting the planning, right? And, and that by, the way I worded my motion was, it would incorporate all that was presented, which was not just the specifics of return via remote, but also incorporating the flexibility they seek. Supporting planning is not approving a plan, which is what they've asked for.
Right, I'm in, I'm in support of, uh, uh, of supporting the administration's recommendation or their, their decision.
But that's, that's not what Patrick's motion does.
Um, I just, uh, wanna comment that this is, this is precisely why I didn't want to vote on this once we've already voted on it in the joint board. We've voted to, that we agreed with the recommendations of the superintendent and the district plans. I, I don't, I really am confused why, still why we're voting again, even though I agreed to do that, because it seems to be necessary. We have said that we're in full support of that.
Okay, can, if we've already done it, why can't we just do it again? Because the joint board doesn't have authority over the Exeter School District. We do.
Yeah, I, I am curious what the hangup is, like the.
I'm with you.
Um.
My hangup is, is voting on something that may in some way bind their decisions moving forward. That's my concern.
Bind whose decisions? The administrators?
Yes.
Well, then we would vote to, along with their changes that they come, you know, as recommendations come.
But again, it's not our plan, which is what, it's not our plan. It's their plan that we are privy to and we discuss and whatnot. I mean, we, that's.
I don't think they, since we're having discussion, I don't think they need to come back to us each time they modify this plan. I don't think they need to keep coming back to us and say, hey, we wanna go in person now. Hey, you know what? We figured out a way to do hybrid, and that makes sense, given new technology and availability of teachers and other sort of factors. Or, you know what? We're gonna go back full in person with no restrictions. I don't think they need to keep coming back to us with each individual change as these things developed. That I think we, I'm in support of our administration to make those decisions. And if, at one point in time, we, they, we talked about, they will come back to the board if we needed to change policies, or if we need to approve additional funding, and we've done that. We provided three hundred thousand dollars for, uh, computers and Chromebooks last spring because we knew there's a possibility we'd rather start remotely or, um, trends, or start in person and might have to transition to remote. I think those sort of things we should be doing, and we've been very supportive as a board of this, uh, administration for good reason. But I, I think we should be more flexible, and I don't think they, they should have to come back to us each time they wanna change their plan. I think we should just have a general expression of support, which is the motion that's on the floor at the second.
Patrick, how do you respond to the observation that they have asked us to approve or not the plan? And you, you would prefer not to do either?
I think that our, that the motion is supportive of their plan because it is, it is saying that we provide support for the administration, both at the SAU level and the district level, and what they're doing with their planning for return to school. That says that we're supporting their plan. They haven't even finished their plan. There's a lot of things that were talked about tonight. There's no information on the community care centers. There's things that Drew and Steve have talked about. We still need to meet with our teachers on how we wanna try to do something. We have an idea how that's gonna work, but we wanna tweak it. Uh, there's a lot of things that will continue to change, and I think we hire good people for a reason, and I'm very supportive of them. But I understand that there was a particular request, but the, honestly, that request has changed at different times. We brought this up at several board meetings ago, and where we said, we had a discussion about whether or not it was the school board's listen and learn session, or was the administration's. And we decided that we were going to host it, but it was the administration's session because it was their plan. And at that time, we talked about why would we take a vote? And the, the, uh, discussion that we had at the time was, well, you may not need to take a vote. You may take a vote to either support a policy or make a policy decision, or to make a decision about budgeting and financing for something. If those things come up, and there's a need for the board to vote on it, of course, we'll be responsive, and we'll meet and vote on those things. I don't think it's appropriate for us to do more than what we're doing. I think we should provide general support so that they have flexibility to move forward.
Does that mean, Patrick, you think that what the co-op board did last night was inappropriate?
I don't care what the co-op board does, honestly.
Okay, any more discussion? Alright, roll call vote. Don Bolins?
Aye.
Sarah Edwards?
Aye.
Patrick O'Day?
Aye.
Patty Saret?
Aye.
Neil Black and his no. Motion passes.
Neil, I don't know where this fits in the agenda, but at some point, I would like to have an opportunity, to provide some feedback or, or, and ask some questions about the return to school planning. And maybe that's, maybe we should put that at the end of the agenda. I don't know where you think it fits best, but I just wanted to flag that. I don't think it fit into the discussion we just had.
Right, so let's, maybe we can fit in later. Let, let's move on.
Okay.
Alright. Esther? The administrative report.
Sure, I've asked Dave, uh, Dr. Ryan, to speak to the safety and security issue. So, Dr. Ryan?
I don't have the agenda in front of me. Is that with regard to some of the threatening?
Threats against teachers, administration, and staff is what's posted on the agenda.
Sure, yeah. So last week, uh, some people experienced some hateful messages, whether they be by phone. Uh, we did receive some emails with some very colorful language. Um, there were a few that, uh, indicated very clearly from people that they were going to be following teachers around, taking photos of them, where, without their masks on or out in public spaces. Um, there are a few particular, uh, folks who are very direct in, in their criticism. Uh, there have been no death threats, so I don't want anyone to think that there are death threats. There's nothing, nothing like that. Um, and, uh, frankly, it was, I think, a handful of people who were really just expressing their frustration and anger over all that's happening. Uh, it's a combination of a COVID-induced, uh, set of circumstances that has changed everybody's life as they know it. And, um, we've made some decisions that are not in line with what some of our community members' thinking is. And we understand that. We respect that. We, we accept that. Knowing that if we changed or do change some of our decisions, that there is going to be a new set of, pieces of communication that will not be, uh, very supportive of those changes. So, um, in a time when everything seems to be upside down, given what's happening, uh, not only at the national level, but, um, but certainly at the, at the state level, um, this is a really hard time for people, and we don't need COVID, uh, to be, uh, in a, helping exacerbate situations, but I think that's exactly what, what has happened, is, is there's some anger and frustration at some decisions that we have made. Uh, some easy targets. Uh, teachers tend to be an easy target. Um, I'm married to a teacher, so I tend to get, uh, a little bit more personal when it comes time to defend what our teachers do in our classrooms. Um, we all know the hard work that they put in. This was not a decision that our teachers have made. Uh, this was not a decision that anyone on this board has made. But certainly, moving to remote instruction and utilizing the talents of our teachers to shift, everything that they know from in-person learning to remote instruction, has taken an awful lot of time and a lot, awful lot of courage on their part. So we've had a couple of those, you know, threatening messages where it did put a lot of our teachers kind of, um, on their heels. Uh, it surfaced through Facebook posts that we don't monitor, but we were informed of. Um, we received a couple of emails at the central office. We received a couple of phone calls. One, one is recent as yesterday, directed towards me. Which a director of security has, and if we need to follow through, we will follow through on it. Um, but we're not gonna let that, uh, deter, um, the wonderful support that we've received from this community. Um, this community supports education like no other that I've seen. Um, and just because we have seven or eight angry people who express themselves with a choice of language that's not all that appropriate or professional, and most likely impulsive, uh, we're not gonna let that taint the reputation that this entire community has and the feelings that it has towards its teachers, administrators, uh, school board members, uh, and the entire school system. So, um, we're hopeful that that is the end of, um, any of those types of comments coming from the community. We hear you. We understand you're frustrated. We're all moving forward together as a community. Um, and I'm feeling confident that that's where a good majority of our community members are at this point.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Dr. Ryan. Is Molly up next, Esther?
Yes, for a financial update, or, um, Michelle. It looks like Michelle is here.
I'm here, Taster.
Oh, sorry, Molly. Long lady bunch square.
Um, so the last time we met, we had brought, uh, forward the approximate return to taxpayers of one point one million. Um, and then since then, we encumbered the technology, the retirements, and the DEI training. And as we closed out some purchase orders, we saw approximately two hundred and forty thousand dollars in savings. So that brings us to an unreserved fund balance, or in other words, what we expect to turn, return to taxpayers of, what was in your board pack of five hundred and seventeen thousand, two hundred and eighty-six dollars. Did anyone have any questions?
So Molly, the, the original number we were guessing was, I think, two or three hundred thousand. That essentially doubled, right?
Yeah, so as we, um, close out purchase orders, um, for stuff that wasn't used or stuff that wasn't needed, we saw some additional savings.
That we're gonna return, in spite of the almost eight hundreds, over eight hundred thousand dollars we encumbered or spent ahead of time for COVID nineteen, we're still returning over half a million dollars to the town of Exeter?
Expected, yes. There's still a, a few closeouts that need to happen, but that's the projection at this point in time.
Thank you.
I think that's a, a good point, Neil, that I think you're, you're getting at, because there has been a lot of community feedback that I've heard here and there about if we're not using all the services, do people get a break on their taxes? And essentially, that's what that is. It goes back to offsetting the tax rate for the next year. So that's the way that they get to take a break on their taxes.
Yes, Patrick, that's exactly right. And so any cost savings that we see in the upcoming school year will be used to reduce the amount needed to raise for the twenty-one, twenty-two school year.
Alright, the last thing on my part is, um, we had asked the Exeter Board for a representative for the, to be on the SAU Budget Advisory Committee, and, um, I just wanted to know if anyone was willing to be that representative on the SAU Budget Advisory Committee.
So, so a quick, quick aside, Don, you and I had spoken, uh, earlier, and I, I asked you if you were interested. Do, do you think you might be interested in doing that?
I'll be muted, Don.
Yes, I would. Thank you, Neil. Yes.
If, if anyone else.
If anyone, unless someone else is interested.
Alright, thanks, Don. Alright. Administrative, sorry.
All set.
Administrative matters. Um, we have minutes for the July eighth, twenty twenty, non-public, uh, meeting. And the July sixteenth, uh, public board minutes. Anybody comments or recommended additions or? Uh, any changes?
I'm making a, a motion to approve, approve both sets of minutes.
I'll second. Roll call vote, please. Uh, Don Bolins?
Aye.
Sarah Edwards?
Aye.
Patrick O'Day?
Aye.
Patty Saret? Neil Black and his aye. Thank you. Um, emails. We had some emails, uh, and, uh, that we were going back and forth discussing some issues. After a while, they became, um, probably, you know, arguably substantive. I think the idea here is that we should put them into the, um, I don't know, incorporate them into this meeting package as opposed to perhaps the next. Is that right, Esther? So anyone have an objection to that?
These are the emails, um, that occurred July, uh, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen, when we were trying to set up meeting dates, and people had questions about, um, policies and people's roles. And so it was more extensive than just setting up a meeting date. And so I felt that would be important to get these part of the public record, since that was a quorum. All the board members were on the emails.
Right. Any, any objection to that? Alright. I, I don't have anything else. Does anyone have anything else for administrative matters as an other line here?
Alright, I guess, I guess the, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, that's okay. Um, uh, I, I, I think this, I guess, I'm not sure if it falls under administrative as part as the sort of return, returning, uh, section that I don't know if we're gonna have time for or not. So it's sort of a facilities question. So.
Go ahead.
Okay. Um, there was, um, talk last night regarding, um, the HBAC systems and updates and upgrade that would be hap, could be happening in all the schools. And I was wondering if we could talk about that for Main Street, uh, Lincoln Street and the preschool? If we have any updates on that, and what we might need and what it might cost for our district.
Esther, I have the cost right here, if you want me to talk about it. So.
Molly, could you fill in the board on what you're talking about? Cause not everyone was at the meeting last night.
Okay, sorry. So Rusty, um, and Dan have put together a proposal regarding, um, ionization air purification system. And it not only, um, kills, I don't wanna say completely kills COVID, but I think it's a, um, ninety percent accuracy, that it also does the flu, common cold, and it will have benefits going forward. And in that, the school, school street total was four thousand, three hundred and ninety-two. Main Street was thirteen thousand, two hundred and twenty-eight, and Lincoln Street was seven thousand, uh, and five dollars.
So can I fill in some?
Sure, yeah.
So, uh, obviously, a layer of defense against any type of airborne, um, virus is a good filtration system, right? Wanting to bring in as much fresh air from the outside as possible, uh, and eliminating any of the air that's inside. You always want that air at least above your head moving, so it's pulling things out. Um, and one of the things in our filtration system.
And one of the things that our filtration system is able to do is accept new filters called MERV 13s. And that's a very highly rated filter that can filter through 85% of the particulates coming from outdoor air. So that leaves about 15%. It's the highest quality, the best rating you can find for a filter. But it leaves about 15% of the particulates that make it through that filter. The ionization equipment will then take care of 99, I think it's 99.3% of that 15% that gets through. So you're essentially between the increased quality in filters in your filtration system as well as the ionization systems, which are portable. They can be affixed, but they're not terribly large. Will basically take care of over 99% of any of the issues that occur relative to virus. So as Molly alluded to, certainly SARS-CoV-2, cold, influenza, any other issues that are airborne. So for relatively, I mean, I'm going to use relatively small amount, but given what we're dealing with and what we're trying to do to preserve safety and health for our kiddos and teachers in schools, it goes a long way and is short money, I think, for providing that extra layer of defense that we're going to need if we have more and more people joining into our schools and as we get into the cold and flu season. So it was a recommendation that we made to the cooperative board last evening. And I think it was closer to about $88,000 for them because of the size of the buildings and the number of units, including the Tuck campus and the SAU office area. This is about, would you say, Molly, about $25,000 and change total for the three buildings, EDP, MSS, and Lincoln Street? So I think it's worth a conversation. Dan Westmoreland is a wizard when it comes to HVAC in our buildings. He's aware that Main Street School requires some attention in terms of its filtration. He's actively working on that. He's also installing 10 new air handlers out in Brentwood. Problem with that is that the air handlers in Brentwood are not being constructed as quickly because there was a slowdown when COVID shut down the plant that made the parts for those air handlers. He doesn't want to run into the same situation here. In that, right now, we have these ionization machines available to us. He's afraid if we wait too long and other schools continue to order, they'll become backordered, and then we'll be back where we started, where we wouldn't know if we had them in time for September, October. So I think that's the conversation that we wanted to have this evening, and perhaps why Dawn wanted to bring that up.
Can I ask a couple of follow-up questions if you have the information, David? Thank you. I'm not sure if it... So when we talk about it taking care of the rest of the 15%, I guess, what I didn't hear last night is, so let's just talk about a classroom, generally, let's say. Is that, does this still take into account social distancing? So there's space between people? Like, do you know how that works as far as the air exchange that way? You know what I mean? I don't want the notion to be out there, whether it's true or not true, if like, the room will be clean whether we fill it full of kids or not.
Not a substitute. I understand. Not a substitute for any of the safety and health guidelines that we would still be subscribing to. So we would still have students and staff in masks. We would still be distancing by six feet. We'd still be cutting down the number of bodies or reduction of density and restriction of mobility. So we would still be adding. Those are all considered layers. And this is an additional layer that would help safeguard against any additional harm that would come through, you know, what they're calling now, not two pandemics, but a twin pandemic, right? With COVID and influenza. And I've learned more about HVAC in the last week than I care to tell you.
Yeah, and you did a better job explaining it than me.
Oh, just a lot of buzzwords.
Is that it, Dawn?
Yeah, I mean, I think that, just to sort of echo what Dr. Ryan said, and I'm not sure how many of you were on the call last night. I couldn't see off the panelists. But I think this is something that would be very important to institute at our schools, even going forward with cold flus, all the above $25,000 to equip those three schools with this ionizer to add that other layer of protection, I think is really important. And I would like to make a motion to go ahead and approve that this evening, so that we don't fall short and not be able to secure those.
Sure. Okay. Is there a second? Sarah?
I just had a question to follow up on Dawn's question.
Hold on, wait, wait. So Dawn made a motion, right, Dawn? You actually made it, right?
Yes. I mean, we can open up for discussion if you'd like me to withdraw the motion.
No, no. Okay, sure. Withdraw and come back. Sarah, question?
I'm just concerned with the information that was presented, that it might sound like with this filtration system, there's only a 1% chance that an infected person would then infect others. And I just feel like maybe that's a misrepresentation, that this is an additional layer that the school is, would like to put into practice for caution, but it's not the catch-all. So pardon me, thanks, you know, listening, that if we put this in, then it would be safe for all children to go to school. Like, someone might hear that and then have that understanding. I don't know. Dr. Ryan, can you speak to that? I think it's a little bit hard to understand.
Sure. I don't know where that came from, the 1% chance and so forth. I think that the tact that we want to take is, all we're trying to do is minimize risk of contraction of a virus, whether it be SARS-CoV-2 or influenza. There's never a guarantee. No one can guarantee. I don't think anybody can guarantee that someone is not going to contract the virus just because we implement all of the safety guidelines, including this equipment. I would never make that guarantee. I spoke last night about collateral damage. I think when we talk about having students and staff return to school buildings, you're talking in terms of what are we willing to put up with in terms of risk? And what number of cases are we willing to withstand? Because there's no guarantee that there are going to be zero cases in any school, anywhere. And so what we try to do is build in the different levels of security for people. That means an air filtration system, such as improving the filters and the ionization equipment. It means implementing all of the guidelines that we already know about, utilizing as much space as we can. There's no guarantee. I would never want to say, Sarah, that by putting this equipment in, it makes the building safe for everybody. It will reduce risk, but I would never say that it just makes it safer. So that's why I think when Dawn asked the question, I wanted people to understand this is not a substitute for anything that we would need to do. This is just an additional step in minimizing the risk, but there's never a 0% risk.
Right. And I think, thank you. I think that clarification is really important when people hear about the 85% of the filtration of the first filter, and then getting 99% or 90% or more of the next one. Those are obviously figures that people would be excited to hear about the safety of the air. And I think that we just need to reinforce that. These are all layers of precaution that we're taking. Thank you. That's all.
Dawn, you want to put your motion on the floor again?
Sure. I'd like to make a motion to approve the purchase of the ionizers that we need for our three Exeter district buildings.
Second? Patrick, seconds. Roll call vote. Dawn Ballance.
Aye.
Sarah Edwards.
Aye.
Patrick Gooday. Patty Saret.
Aye.
Neil Blacken's aye. Motion passes. Thank you. All right. If there's not anything else, Mr. Berisso, diversity, equity, inclusion, and justice.
So we are still an active committee. And as a matter of fact, the DEIJ leadership team will be planning and meeting this week. We are currently working towards some professional development for the teachers on a return. And the rest of the staff, I should say, the whole staff, both Lincoln and Main Street, we're committed to one day, at the very least, for this topic, just at the outset here, at the beginning of the school year. The DEIJ committee is also going to be working on getting affinity groups started up in this fall. I think I mentioned that at one of our last meetings. So affinity groups are groups of folks that are formed around a shared interest or a common goal. And they work together towards that goal and that interest. And so as of right now, those affinity groups look like there'll be, there's four different groups. One is families of Black Indigenous and people of color. Another group is learning to be an anti-racist white ally. Another group is school leaders for social justice. And the fourth group is educators for social justice. So we're looking to work together with folks across the district and within our own school community and town as well in this endeavor. So I will be able to give you some more details at our next board meeting about how that professional development went and how the DEIJ committee is getting kicked off those affinity groups.
Thank you, Drew. Patrick and Sarah, the negotiations for me. I'm assuming you want to talk to Dr. Campbell. Is that right?
Yes, we will. Well, I would defer to Tom. Thank you.
Thank you, Sarah. Thank you, Neil. So specifically, the memorandum of agreement that we are working on with all of our associations. Both David and I had a session with Nicole Argraves, who's the UNISERV director. And I don't know if every president was represented, but there was a large representation of the presidents that represent all of our unions. We began with the Health and Safety MOA, so their proposal is two different MOAs. One is Health and Safety, the other is Working Conditions. So we began with the Health and Safety. I think we got through, Dr. Ryan helped me, about nine or 10 of their proposals, some of which we were in agreement and accepted, others which we provided feedback modifications and others which we did not support. So it'll be a slow process. I think that one of the thoughts that I have is to focus on the Health and Safety, but since we're likely to be in remote, it's the Working Condition MOA that really, I think, is maybe the priority. So I will be having a conversation with Nicole Argraves about, you know, about that idea of shifting to the Working Conditions, because that is right around the corner, whereas Health and Safety and Return in Person, physically in the building, will likely happen at a later time. So I think we're making a slow but steady progress. We had just that one, Dave and I, Dr. Ryan and I, had an initial planning meeting with Nicole. But this meeting on the 13th was an actual negotiations, and we're scheduled again to meet on August 24 to continue the conversation on both Health and Safety and the Working Conditions.
Thank you, Dr. Campbell. Any questions, folks? Thank you very much, sir. Is there any old business? Yes, ma'am. Esther?
I just wanted to, I have connected with Allison, and she just wanted me to share that the square one art that normally happens is going to be done virtually for the PTO. And they'll have more information after they connect with building administration about other PTO news. But that's the only thing she had to share for tonight.
Thank you, Allison. Thank you, Esther.
Yeah, I think we have that. This would be a good place for the return to school conversation that Patrick mentioned earlier, to go under the old business, because it certainly is something that isn't new.
So I've spent a lot of time thinking about this, and I just had some comments, questions, observations. One piece was, one thing I've been impressed about with the planning process is the feedback, the community feedback in particular, how it's helped to inform the plans and improve them. And I'm wondering if there's a way that we can continue to be a part of that process, or the school's going to continue to be a part of that process. So one thing, like tonight, for example, I think a lot of great information came through the public input session. We typically only meet once a month, so that's a long ways off to be getting more feedback from parents. I don't know, and I'm not making this proposal at the moment, but I think we might want to circle back to it, whether or not our board should meet more frequently during these initial period of time, so that we provide a good avenue for families that want to hop online and give feedback, that they're able to do that. So that's one thought that I had that I think might be worth discussing. The second is that, is there any other way that parents and families can give feedback? I know they can email Esther and David and the principals, and they've been doing that. But have we thought about, you know, setting up some sort of a parent panel or some sort of ongoing mechanism to give feedback as, you know, our administration team is working through these day-to-day challenges? Because if we haven't, I think that, whether or not you adopt that particular idea, I just want to provide as many opportunities for the community to be a part of this planning, because it's been really, really helpful. I saw Drew sort of had his hand up, that he's going to say something. So go ahead and feel free to jump in, Drew.
Yeah, it's like you were in our meeting the other day, Patrick. We were actually just brainstorming with my restorative justice leadership team, ways to build relationships and continue to be able to reach out and connect with families. And one of the things that came up, in addition to what I mentioned the other day, was to form some sort of a parent group, parent forum, that we would meet with regularly, just to sort of, again, just field questions and see what concerns or issues are out there that we can work with the families, whether it's questions and answers. It would be more collecting information than the other one. We would be sort of providing information and support. So just a small answer to your general question.
Yeah, that's helpful. Thank you. Another observation or thought is that I know one of the guiding principles for the planning team and the plan that was released is that in-person learning is preferred, that it's more effective. It's, you know, is more educationally purposeful. But we're not in a situation where we can have in-person learning at the moment based on the collective expertise that we have, you know, this group that's here, for example. So I'm wondering if there are anything that we can do to try to approximate in-person learning. So I know there are things that have been done with the orientation sessions, so there's a chance to meet in person. I don't know if there are other opportunities to meet in person that can happen throughout the year. If there's a way to have, because we're only looking at a 45-day period initially, but even 45 days is a long time not to see someone in person. And particularly with the possibility that this could get extended, are there ways that we can use outdoor space or other venues to try to get some students together in person, so that they have that connection? I also wonder about things that we've had in a typical school day, field trips, for example. You know, can we have field trips? Is there a way to get someone from Wolf Hollow to do a panel presentation to 500 students at once? So that it's this sort of forum, and, you know, we have a field trip as part of it. Is there a way to do things like after-school enrichment, so that some of it's done virtually, but some things could potentially be done in person? Like Girls on the Run was one that came to mind, if that's possible to do. But are there any sort of activities that can still be a part of the day and that we could continue to offer? The other thing I wondered about is just, and I've been thinking about this a lot, because I've been reading all, every email that's coming from a family. I've been reading a lot that's also been posted on Facebook, too, and in the newspapers, and et cetera. And I know some people are really concerned about the impact on families. I heard a couple of questions tonight about what am I supposed to do if it's, you know, 92, two working families? I really appreciate the Community Care Center initiative. I think that's a fabulous idea. But I don't know anything about the cost yet. I don't know, I don't think we know yet what the final cost is going to be. But it made me wonder if we might want to use some of the resources of the school board to try to keep that cost as affordable as possible. When I was in Bridgeton, Maine this past week, I read a story in the local newspaper that they're working with the Recreation Department to provide some sort of community... that they're working with the Recreation Department to provide some sort of community care, childcare opportunities. And they're charging twenty dollars a day, so that it's an affordable option for folks. I'm sure a lot of that's supplement, and I don't think that's the actual cost. And so depending on what the cost is, if it ends up being something that doesn't feel affordable to our community, do we want to use some of the resources of the school board and some of the money that we set aside to help deal with this pandemic, to try to make it more affordable to families? I think that's a question we might want to return to when we have additional information. I guess those are my, you know, those are my thoughts. I mean, I you know, I I've been very impressed with this planning process. I think it's really been so inclusive, so deliberative. And I know it's continuing to develop, and I appreciate that it's not all set in stone at this moment. So I guess I would want to return to the question that I posted at the beginning of my comments on whether or not our school board should meet more frequently, if that would be beneficial to the administration, if it'd be beneficial to the community to have us meeting, say, in two weeks, for example, so that we're meeting twice a month instead of once a month, at least as this initial plan is getting rolled out? Or does that seem like an extra burden that all the people that are on this panel don't want or need? Because I also can appreciate that folks are super busy, and it would only be meant to be something that's helpful. So I wanted to throw that out there and get some feedback, because I'm certainly willing to come to an extra meeting if it's helpful, but I I don't want to impose another medium on folks if it's not, of course.
Discussion? Go ahead.
Oh, sorry, I was just gonna sort of comment on sort of Patrick's last statement, his first statement regarding, you know, other ways to involve, you know, to get cohorts together or, you know, other ways. I think I would generally be really in support of that as well. I know that that's another layer to all of this for the administration and the teachers and things like that. But I do know that they're super creative when it comes to finding really fantastic things for our students. And sort of to comment on his last about getting together more frequently, I think I agree that I would would not want to put any further burden on the, you know, the administrators and everyone taking up more time. But I am, I am completely willing to do that if if that's helpful or necessary. I would make myself available. So, you know, if the need is there, then I'm supportive of it.
I'm just going to offer a little personal reflection. While you were talking, Patrick, I was going through my calendar. I I think since June twenty-second, I think we've had nine meetings with the board, which, I mean, that's a lot. And and I don't want to ask our team, especially now, as we're getting ready to, twenty-three days out from the beginning of school, I would strongly suggest we don't do this. That we've, they have given an incredible amount of support to this board in this town by being present, maybe more than any other town in the SAU. They've done a stunningly fabulous job. And and we're not tactical, right? The idea of, you know, having tonight's meeting was to essentially, okay, you know, whatever, to to hopefully make the decision or not, and to then kick it off. And, you know, we're letting them go, we're letting them execute their plan. They don't need, in my opinion, but they do not need more school board meetings. It is a lot of work for everyone, and they have, I think, a lot of things to do, which are higher priority than talking to us. That's my opinion. Anyone else?
Yeah, I think that we can kind of just hit pause on that and see how the community responds. And if there's all sorts of hysteria and, you know, people looking for answers, then maybe we can come back to that idea. Of course, I would be willing, but I think that all of our efforts need to be focused on getting this plan in action. Than ideal, I don't think, for anyone.
I'd also said, I'm sorry, Sarah, I didn't mean to cut you off.
My comment is that, you know, the administrators have been so open to asking parents to initiate contact with them when they have concerns. And I think one of the benefits of this meeting is parents being able to have their questions read, because I think there's a lot of similar concerns in that you're sort of not going it alone. That parents have similar, you know, we have working parent groups, we have people who have medical issues. We have, I I think that, I I hope that this forum where we've been able to answer questions has helped people. And if we weren't going to read parent questions to offer that support, in addition to them, I also think it's a lot of work for administrators to respond personally to everyone to perhaps similar questions. So I'm thinking about, you know, as we continue to develop answers to the frequently asked questions and make those very available to our community. Because I I think the success in remote learning is about parent partnership and parent education for our youngest kids. It's different than the high school, that our, having our administrators and our teachers educate our parents about the most successful way to prepare your child, to answer parents' questions so they feel prepared, that that will start the year off in a more positive way. So I I agree with you that, you know, continuing to address the questions is so critical. And so the question then is, what is the forum? And perhaps it's not the board meeting, perhaps their individually reaching out to administration is adequate. And, you know, we take the temperature of the community, as Patty has indicated. Those are my thoughts.
I I'm happy to take the lead for the administration on what they want with this. I'm not, that's why I didn't make a formal proposal, even though I know we're sort of going around the horn to discuss this. I'm not making a motion that we have another meeting, but I agree with you, Sarah. And I I think with Patty and Neil, ultimately, that really, it's whatever's most helpful that we can be available to facilitate something. I do have a question about this. If we, if, well, maybe I can get a sense, do people think it's a good idea to try to offset the cost of the Community Care Center to individuals? Or is that something that's just too difficult to talk about without without having any real information yet? I saw Esther's, or?
Yeah, I I would, I would just caution the board to go down this road, because I just don't have enough information. I think to to have a reasonable conversation so that you could make, you know, any kind of progress on what you were considering. I just, I don't have that yet for you as we work through it. So that's just my thoughts, but obviously you're welcome to discuss it. I just don't have much to add to your conversation to help you.
Pat, Patrick, I would add that I and others, I think, approached Esther separately and said similar things that, listen, we want to help with this if we can, we know we have a hundred thousand dollars in the Wheelwright, the former Wheelwright Trust funds, I don't know if we can use, you know, other funds, but we 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 share your sentiment, I think.
I think we have five hundred thousand dollars that we set aside for coronavirus-related needs. And but but in any case, whether or not we have, I don't know what kind of money we would need and look at. So I think Esther's right. But if we don't meet between now and when we turn the school open, then we couldn't make any formal action as a board, I guess. I guess we'll have to wait and see what information comes out and what the pricing is. And if we feel that we need to schedule a quick meeting, we can schedule it at that time.
How about this, Esther, if you think you need us to do something to help out, let us know. We can always call a meeting, right? This, we're here.
Yeah.
I'm not going anywhere.
Yeah, that's my sentiment as well.
All right, all right, good, we good, Patrick?
We are, thank you.
All right, anyone else? Motion to adjourn, I'll make a motion to adjourn, is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, Don Bolins.
Aye.
Sarah Edwards.
Aye.
Patrick Godey.
Aye.
Patty Sorret.
Aye.
Neil Blackensai, aye, thank you also very much.
Thank you.